Two minutes.
One minute.
Pamela Lopez Fettis.
Call the August 17th, 2020 Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting to Order. The clerk will call a roll.
Arivolo?
Present.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present.
Full house. Good deal. Right, please stand but pledge allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you to welcome you to this meeting and acknowledge you as our Creator and Provider. It is you who are omnipresent. You are everywhere, Lord. It is you who are omnipotent. You have all power. It is you who are omniscient. It is you who is all-knowing. As we begin our meeting, Lord, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and actions so that we may accomplish positive outcomes, serving you and our community. Help us to achieve our goals while displaying our character. These things we pray in your mighty name, O Lord. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence to honor Ron Gilman, who went home to the Lord last Wednesday. Ron was the beloved husband of Chris Gilman, our Belvidere Fire Department Administrator Assistant. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Under a public comment, this evening Jeff Carlisle, representing Boone County District Two, wishes to address the council on the Fairgram proposal for storm water mitigation and management.
Okay, I hope everybody hears me. I want to say one of the things I understand about this stormwater is that it's necessary. I understand that. One of the most frustrating things and aspects of life is sometimes not being able to understand other persons or companies' presentations. Temptation is to focus on apparent needs of what's it going to do for me? What I want to do here is make sure we understand some of the things that we know and what we're hearing. A fee or taxes to be implemented. Now, the math on this is subject to a estimate. The ERU math is common, although the numbers to each household and businesses are not in this report. The reason for fee was listed in this was being used because there was a challenge suit of churches in the Rock Island area. Since they have, some have retention ponds on their property, the city of Rock Island found the ruling that stormwater utility fee is a fee and not a tax in favor of the municipalities. But let's also understand that they did that through a volunteer, should have been done through a volunteer nature. If it's done through a volunteer nature, the fee could be negated if it's done on a home rule. The costs, by the way, I did find out if there's extreme costs, if it was going to be put on a ballot. There's not a lot. I got that information from our county clerk. There's a lot. The fee comes from advertising. In the positions, those advertisements have cost implications. If and when the proposed Baxter-Woodman estimate is mission-ready, we'd like to see drawings, plans. We'd like to see the purchase proposal of land that is expected to be done. We also would like to know, I'd like to let you know that in that proposal for the Fairgram, there was additional staffing for the MS4 program. We are all in an MS4 program here. And I'd like to know if you guys were aware of all that. The EPA on this thing has permits currently that allow us discharge into its system, into the Kishawaki River, in the contributing streams. So when we do make all these changes, if we do, are we going to have to renegotiate those permits because they're going to be different? That's some of the things I'd like to know. I also talked to Dan Kane of the WPPA. I sent him the Baxter-Woodman account. He had not that, not read it, not seen it, and he'll give me his information later on. I'm going to give him time for that. I also want to let you know that somebody here in the county who's extremely good at stormwater is Justin Crone. He's our county engineer. And he is available if you'd like to talk to him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Next up, we have approval of minutes of the regular meeting of Belvidere City Council of August 3rd, 2020. As presented, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Flurry. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Alderman Arivolo. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Under public hearing this evening, we have a public hearing regarding the annexation agreement of this, with the Cemetery Association of Belvidere. And I will read in abbreviated form of the of the public notice. Otherwise, we'll be here tonight until bedtime. Notice of Public Hearing on Annexation Agreement, Belvidere City Council, Belvidere, Illinois, on Monday evening, August 17th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Public hearing will be held by the mayor and city council members of the city of Belvidere in the city council chambers, 401 Whitney Boulevard, Belvidere, Illinois, for the purpose of considering and hearing testimony as to an ordinance authorizing an annexation agreement relating to real property, commonly known as the Belvidere Cemetery, located on Fairgrounds Road, Belvidere, Illinois, and legally described as in the publication that was put forth. Is there anyone here to comment during this public hearing? Please note that we entered the public hearing at 7:09. If there is no one here to comment, we will exit the public hearing at 7:11. Thank you for that. Under number six, Special Messages and Proclamations, we have via telephone Director Pamela Lopez Fettis from Growth Dimensions. Pamela? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Yes, can you hear me okay?
You could speak up a little.
Okay. Okay, so I just wanted to share with you some activity and some that we've been having. Usually we report enterprise zone projects, and last month we had reported six enterprise zone projects. We now have 31 new projects this year. And this is primarily with the same businesses with a slight increase in investments in construction material costs as well as capital investment. We also have been holding some education forums. We call them forward forums. And the next one is held, is going to be held this Friday at 1:00 PM, where we're going to have District 100 and Belvidere Park District talking about education. So if you'd like to participate, you're more than welcome. We could, we'll have that on our calendar. Also, we've had three recent webinars focused on recovery. The first one is called the Boone County Economic Development Bootcamp. It was sponsored with Commonwealth Edison, and we featured information on Forward Boone, the Workforce Connection, Intersect Illinois, and Site Selector. And what we did was highlight a general outlook on recovery resources, industry, and workforce and economic trends in Boone County. So if you'd like to, again, see the reporting, we have a recording available that we can distribute. We also held one with the Center for Automotive Research, and we did this on August 12th. And the webinar provided an overview and insights of the automotive industry, investment trends, and technology at both the national and local levels. So we are trying to access a recording if you weren't able to see that, so we can distribute that as well. Our last one we held this week was on education, which we called Experience Plus Education Equals Success. We held this with Rockford University and the Workforce Connection in the Belvidere Area Chamber of Commerce. So again, we have a recording of that that's available as well. So we've had some business engagements and trying to connect some resources with businesses in our community. And we also have some projects that I wanted to highlight. One is that Rock Valley College did sign, or enter, will be entering to lease with, for the ShopCo Center. So we'll be continuing to work on that project. And we're also working with a company out of New York to encourage them to partner with a business locally to develop a product in Boone County. We've had one meeting with them via phone. We're going to have a virtual meeting with them on Saturday to follow up. It's likely they will come to this area, but we want to make sure that it's in Boone County. We also have to say that we're trying to encourage some residential opportunities. We've been talking to a couple of builders. What we're trying to encourage is to, because we have a need for diversified housing, we have a lot of people interested in maybe smaller units than a single-family home. And they're having to go outside of Boone County to access them. So this is a way that we can encourage our young people to stay here and to attract more young people to the community. Also, it helps because on the other end, we have a older population that wants to stick around as well. We have, are also working with the, with the Small Business Entrepreneurial Program. We have an information session scheduled for this Friday at 3:00 PM at the Boone County Museum of History. So we invite everyone to come and learn more about the program. We will have the trainers there. We have two trainers, Matt Branham and Beau Boger. And they're going to be sharing a little bit about the program, answering questions. We'll be able to talk about scholarships that we do have available for some aspiring businesses. But this is not just for aspiring businesses, it's for existing businesses as well. So we just encourage everyone, if you can, please participate, come and learn more about the program. We will try to also record some of these pieces as well to share them if you're not able to attend. We also wanted to invite you to our annual event. And it's, usually it's in April. We now have it scheduled for September 10th. This will be an afternoon event, so like over the lunch hour. And we'll be sending out invitations this week.
Okay, thank you, Pamela. Appreciate it as always. Next up?
You're welcome.
We have approval expenditures. First up are general and special fund expenditures of $2,583,957.56. I have a motion to approve these expenditures.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Flurry. Questions, comments, or discussion on any of the expenditures in the general fund expenditures? Yes?
I was wondering if Becky could explain why it's so high? Is it because of the pensions?
Correct. Pension payments are being made this month totaling almost 1.2 million to police and fire.
Additional questions or comments concerning the general fund expenses?
Alderman Porter?
Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Okay, I just thought, quick question on the second page here of the general. For Growth Dimensions, they have a miscellaneous, does it Kaufman Grant, Fast Track, $20,000. I was just wondering what that was all about?
Becky, you're on it.
This is a grant opportunity. It's a collaboration between Growth Dimensions and the city. So technically, the city had to be the recipient of the Kaufman Grant. However, Growth Dimensions is the one that is going to be spending the grant. You think you just heard Pam talk about the trainers and the different businesses that are going to be participating and how to grow their business. That's what this grant is for. But we had to be the recipient, and then we in turn issued a check to Growth Dimensions.
Okay, thanks.
So these were grant dollars that were received that passed through the city to Growth Dimensions as the grant recipient. No cost to the taxpayer.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
I believe this is for Becky as well, on our capital assets on page 42. Can you explain what the Midland State's Bank Debt Service Debt Certificate is? Are we, are we paying them on a loan?
This is the debt certificate. This is the debt certificate that we pay for the remodeling that was done to our City Hall building. So it is, twice a year we pay the interest, and once a year we pay the principal, and you're seeing the principal and the interest payment there.
The remodel was done in 2006, when we bought this building and remodeled it to be City Hall.
It's essentially the mortgage for the purchase and rehabilitation of this building.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, the general and special fund expenditures will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
General and special fund expenditures are approved unanimously, which brings us then to water and sewer fund expenditures of $472,249.16. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve by Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second, please? I'll second that motion. Thank you, Alderman Stevens. I have a motion second. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, the motion will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Approval of water and sewer fund expenditures has passed unanimously. Thank you. Next up, under number eight, committee reports of minutes of city officers. Please note that items A through I have been received and placed on file. Which brings us to item J, minutes of the committee, the whole, building, planning, zoning, and public works of August 10th, 2020. May I have a motion to approve these minutes as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second? I'll second that. Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
Snow has a correction that needs to be made.
Just a moment, please. Just Snow. Just a moment, please. Alderman Frank had a question first. Alderman Frank, please proceed.
Well, I was just going to go back, since we don't do the water and sewer report. I was going to ask Brent, after we left the meeting, there was a storm last Monday. A lot of people said they didn't have pressure. That the water was trickling down, and I just wondered if you had a comment to explain why people in town didn't have water or pressure?
Yes, as a result of the storm, there was a communication issue with our wells system as far as the pumping and the controls there. So when we got those communications lines reestablished, then the system was back up to normal operating pressure. During the time that it was, communications were down, it got down to 32 PSI, I think, system pressure-wise. And as far as regarding boil orders, I know there were some comments and discussions about boil orders. We are required to do boil orders if our system pressure goes below 20 PSI. So we did not, we did not go below that threshold before no boil order was issued. And the system is all back up and running, and you'll be hearing some more from me about this issue at our next public works meeting. Then we'll probably be doing some more electrical work at the water department to ensure that the systems are backed up, and then the backup system is backed up, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Snow, please proceed now.
Okay, on the last page, on the last paragraph, no, sorry, not the last page. Page three, at the bottom, the last paragraph, it's regarding the vote to change the time.
Okay.
And the yeas are Flurry, Snow, and Arivolo, that Snow should be Stevens?
That is correct. It was unscrupulous there.
So we've unscrupulated, right? Okay, it will be updated for the permanent record.
Thank you.
You're most welcome. Any other questions or comments concerning minutes of the committee, the whole, of August 10th? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously, which takes us to number nine and finished business. Under A, Ordinance 492H is the second reading that has been on the table. It's an ordinance authorizing sale of municipal parking lot, i.e. formerly manly lot, to the community building complex. It was tabled August 3rd, and my understanding is it will remain on the table because there are some changes to the, to the document that were requested by the council. They, the Community Building Complex Board has not had their monthly meeting where that will be presented, so it will come back following that and their deliberation on whether to accept our changes as requested. Which brings us to item B, Ordinance Number 501H, a second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the city of Belvidere and the Cemetery Association of Belvidere. I will add to that that this requires eight aye votes, and I am qualified to vote in this instance. So may I have a motion to approve Ordinance 501H? I'll make that motion. Motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second? Alderman Frank?
I'll second that, Porter.
Excuse me? Alderman Porter, what did you say?
Alderman Porter, second.
Okay, we had two seconds, so we have a second and a third. Thank you, Alderman Porter. It's sometimes difficult when we're trying to do this in this fashion, that everybody gets an opportunity to say what's on their mind. So, thank you, Alderman Porter. Questions or comments or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Are you voting?
Mayor concludes with an aye vote also.
Eleven in favor?
So it is unanimous. Ordinance 501H, second reading, is approved unanimously. Which brings us to item C, Ordinance 502H, a second reading, is an ordinance annexing certain territory lying east of Fairgrounds Road and south of Prairie Fields Park, and commonly known as Belvidere Cemetery, to the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois. May I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second? I'll second that. Alderman Stevens will second. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you, representatives of the Cemetery Association, that came this evening to hear the good news.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very welcome. Next up, under ten, new business. First, we have two silent readings. Ordinance, part A is Ordinance 503H. Typically, we, these are not read, but I read them into the record for the folks listening at home or watching on television. Ordinance 503H, a first reading, ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, i.e. video gaming, within the general business district at 396 through 400 West Chrysler Drive. And then under B, we have Ordinance 504H, a first reading, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property, i.e. public works 1979 Fair Snowblower. The old troopers being put out the pasture, and if somebody would like to buy it, we'll entertain that thought. Next, under item C, we did not get motions for this at committee, so we'll get motions for the next two items tonight. Item C is a motion to waive Rule 2-88 referral to committees with respect to replacement of dewatering centrifuge, VFD, at the wastewater treatment plant. This will require a simple majority. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Frank. May I have a second, please? I'll second that. Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion to waive Rule 288, 2-88- to exceed thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. This work will be paid for from the sewer depreciation fund, may I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivelo, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second.
Porter, a second.
A second by Alderman Flurry and Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, yes? Brent, would you like to comment, please?
Yes, thank you, and thanks, thank you, council, for consideration on waiving the two-week requirement. The VFD for the memo, hopefully everybody got the memo, the VFD for the dewatering centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant died, for lack of better description, and needs to be replaced. This is the same piece of equipment that we're talking about, doing upgrades to, at the end of the meeting tonight, and the VFD went down after the, after we had this discussion at the last meeting. Without the VFD, this piece of machinery will not operate, so it's critical that we get this back up in operation. We've got two prices, two proposals, to do that work. Angle Electric is at thirteen thousand eight hundred, and I would recommend approval of that proposal.
So, we have a motion and a second?
I'll make that.
We have a motion and a second, don't we?
Yes, we do.
And a third. So, in that case, are there any other questions or comments concerning the motion that is now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which then takes us to motions forward in the committee of the whole building, planning, and zoning and public works of August tenth, 2020. The motions will be presented by Chairman Freeman. Chairman Freeman, you have the floor.
Thank you. Order A, motion to approve the proposal from the Kohu Group in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for pulling of the pump assembly at line number four. This work will be paid for from the water system depreciation account, numbers all four dash zero nine.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, takes us to item B.
B, motion to waive the bidding process for pass to line number four.
This will require eight aye votes, and the mayor may vote on this issue. Motion out of committee, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion on the floor?
Alderman Porter?
Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Yeah, just, could you refresh my memory? Why are we waiving the bidding process for this one?
Because typically, what happens is when we, we go out to bid, in this case, we went out for bids for the pulling of the, of the assembly works, so everything's out of the ground, and then we rely on the contractor that did that work to assess the, the damage, the repairs that are needed, to do that repair work and do the reinstallation of the well.
On a timely basis. Does that answer your question, Alderman Porter?
Uh, yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the motion now on the floor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Levin in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, brings us to item C.
Uh, item C, motion to approve the proposal from Kohu Group in the amount of eighty-five thousand ninety-seven dollars for pass to line number four, as outlined in their proposal of August tenth, 2020. This work will be paid for from the water system depreciation account, numbers all four dash zero nine.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have a quick question for Brent.
Okay, Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
So, Brent, um, the water system depreciation account, um, of this plus the pulling of the pump assembly is over ninety thousand dollars. Is that depreciation account set for unexpected expenses that come up, emergency expenses like this, or was there other depreciation areas that are going to have to forego for this?
No, the depreciation account is set up, think of it as your savings account, it's, it's just that it's a depreciation account to pay for when our big-ticket items, over time, when they fail or need to be replaced, the depreciation account is there to take up those, those, cover those expenses. We contribute to the depreciation account every month, uh, through our allotment, through the budgeting process, and that way, we make sure that funds are there to do these repairs. So, this will, we have funds there to do these repairs, and we'll still be able to make the other repairs as planned.
Yes, our finance director.
Okay, I was wondering if this money reserve, like, may work for something else you've been lined, and we're gonna have to not do something else.
Finance Director Tullman would like to add a comment?
So, just in case you ever wanted to see the balance of what these depreciation accounts are, if you go to the one-page monthly financial report that I give you, that's in your packet this month, or this, this meeting, you can see the beginning cash balance and the end cash balance. If you go halfway down the page under water sewer, it says, water sewer improvements oh four oh nine, and the balance at the end of July was nine hundred twenty-four thousand three eighteen. So, if you ever want to see the balances, they're, they're right there for you.
I just assumed that, you know, everything depreciates, so, uh, the budgets for items that have depreciated or need repairs or replace, and some of these ones that just come up out of the blood that we didn't realize, and now we're gonna break, I was just wondering if it put a damper on his budget or not, that's all.
Well, it does put a damper on the budget, let's knock on wood that we don't have any more of these unexpected repairs that we have to make, but we have sufficient funds there to cover, cover these costs.
Perfect.
So, now, we will move on to item D, or, no, did we vote?
No, we did not vote.
Okay, I need a motion and a second? Got a motion and a second? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the motion now on the floor, after all of that conversation. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, brings us to item D.
D, motion to approve the construction services work order from Baxter and Woodman in an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the MEB and digester rehabilitation project at the wastewater treatment plant. This work will be paid for from the sewer depreciation account.
Motion out of committee, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, brings us to item E.
E, motion to approve the proposal from Casper's Truck Equipment for a new G fifty snow blower, in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars. This equipment will be paid for from the sewage treatment capital fund, number four one dash five dash seven five two dash eight two zero zero.
Um, we're getting some little feedback, but I think everybody heard that. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Frank?
I just have a question I should have asked last week. Does this Casper snow blower come with the plow already, or do we have to add that later?
No, this is for the snow, snow blower attachment, it's a, it's a separate snow blower that goes on our wheel loader, front-end loaders.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion E is approved unanimously, which brings us to item F.
F, motion to approve the proposal from Barnard Industries in the amount of six thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-eight cents for a new snow plow for wastewater treatment plant truck number four zero six zero. This equipment will be paid for from wastewater treatment plant capital line item six one dash one seven five zero.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivelo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?[1487.83]